It just wants to try me.
I love having a burger. Thank you.
I'm gonna call tonight's meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. We'd all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sir, is this coming through? Yeah, alright, cool. Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Milner. Alderman Milner. She shows on there, so we'll give her a second. Mayor Zaring. You got us, Mike? And Alderman Davidson and Chaney are excused.
Yes, we do show them online. Their mics are muted. So we do have a call. First, we've got a ceremonial matter. Michael Hyatt. Okay, we've had a call. Michael's been with us fifteen years. So we were gonna celebrate Michael's fifteen years with the city. He's got more important things to do.
What comes first?
That's fine. Now we have the police department badge penning.
Alright.
Is this working?
Good evening, Board and Mayor. Tonight, we're going to have a penning ceremony for Officer Dylan Gardella. Dylan graduated high school in 2019 from Harrisville High School. He's a Harrisville native. From there, he served in the military. He was a military police officer for almost five years. And he got out of the military and came back to Harrisville where he was just sworn in, what, about a month ago? Something like that? He was sworn in as a Harrisville police officer. So tonight, he's gonna be pinned by his mother, Kelly.
Okay. Next, we're going to, I'm not gonna pick. No, the Honorable Judge Legrosso, right? Is going to be swearing in our new Chief of Police.
I read a duty.
I read a duty.
On my oath.
On my oath.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Swear that I support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Missouri.
And the laws of the United States and the state of Missouri.
And will comply with the ordinances of the City of Harrisonville.
Will comply with the ordinances of the City of Harrisonville.
And I will discharge the duties of Police Chief.
And I will discharge the duties of Police Chief.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah, the Chief has a few comments to make, and then, go ahead.
So, I promised a long speech. That was approved, right? No, no. I want to thank Mr. Mayor, the Board of Aldermen, C.A. Ratliff, all the department heads that I had the honor of meeting and working with the last couple of weeks. I've already been here for two weeks. It's been fantastic. All the community members that I have met, the men and women of the Harrisonville Police Department, which are top-notch, and of course, all my family that made it here today, and those that are either watching online now or will be watching later. Truly, there's no speech. However, as my first official act, now that I've been sworn in, I have a little presentation I'd like to make. One thing that I want to do here is create, and I know I've seen presentations made to officers in the last few months as I've done my research and I've watched the Alderman meeting, and I want to create a Chief's Commendation. And this would be a commendation given by the Chief of Police to an officer, a member of the Police Department, who's gone above and beyond and deserves that recognition. So today, and truth be told, all of these officers were told to be here, but not for me, but for this individual. And I'd like Lieutenant Darla Harris to come up. That's the, I'm gonna get it later. Look, I'm starting to learn Darla's. And we have a cake over there for you, too.
I think I can.
That's good, 'cause it's yours. You can share it if you like. So, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I want to read what we put here. And I wrote this with the help of those folks who have been leading Harrisonville without a Chief for a while over the last few months. So, on February 8th, 2024, Lieutenant Darla Harris was entrusted with the responsibility of serving as the interim Police Chief for the Harrisonville Police Department during a critical transition period. With the understanding that the search for a new Chief could be a lengthy and challenging process, Lieutenant Harris accepted the role without hesitation. Her leadership has been marked by an unwavering commitment to the department and the community it serves. Under her guidance, the department navigated a time of great uncertainty and stability and purpose. Her ability to inspire confidence, maintain morale, and ensure the continued excellence of the department during this period has been nothing short of exemplary. In recognition of her exceptional service, Lieutenant Harris is hereby awarded the Chief's Commendation, the first Chief's Commendation, for her outstanding dedication, leadership, and tireless efforts in support of the Harrisonville Police Department.
Thank you, everybody. But really thank you to all the guys, and y'all, on the Police Department.
So I wanted, I wanted to thank you as well. You know, I'm the one that asked you. Asked you to take on this task, and I knew it wasn't an easy task to do. It's never easy to come in after someone's been there a long period of time, and then the challenges that were going on within the Police Department, and the challenges that we were facing within the entire city as a whole. And you took it on with no concern on your ability as a police officer. But you also took it on as an opportunity to help your fellow officers. And I know you had to deal with a demanding city administrator. I hear he's demanding. But she always would laugh at me when I would ask her to do something. And she would say, "Oh, you think I can do that?" But I want you to know how much I appreciate what you did for the department. Appreciate it, coming in and taking on this task, because I knew it wasn't an easy one. Police today take a lot of bad and negative flack across the country for a lot of reasons that have nothing to do with just doing their job. I'm thankful we're in a community that's very supportive of our police officers and care about the job that they do here. But I wanted you to know from me and the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen and the department heads how much we appreciated you stepping in to take those rings for this period of time. And we know that you've got more wonderful things ahead.
We are taking a short recess at this time to have cake, so everyone, everyone have cake. Where is the cake? While they're, while they're cutting the cake. Mike is here?
Mayor Zaring, while we have a little bit of a lull, are you able to hear us? For some reason, I'm not getting you or Alderman Milner to come through. If we need to, we'll use the chat. I might go ahead and reboot the, I can, what I can do is I can also reboot the meeting and come in again, and we'll try to re-admit everybody, and we'll, we'll try to get you guys so the audio is coming through. I know.
Okay, cake is over. We're moving on. We do have a public participation this evening. Mr. Warren, if you want to come up, and Alderman, I know he's got more than three minutes. Can we just give him this six right now? Does that work? Okay, you got, you got six minutes. We're gonna get that out of the way. Yes, pass those out. When you're ready, you got six.
Once again, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me to speak in front of you. My name's Timothy Warren. I live at 1305 South Main Street here in town. And what you're being handed out is just pictures, and I'm gonna go along, starting with the beginning. The first one, for some of you don't know, that is my residence, that is my vehicles in the road, and my camper in the driveway, and my wife's car in the garage. So basically, I got a full house. The no parking sign was put on my side of the street, which causes an issue with me financially and my safety and inconvenience. The second picture is from South Street, facing south, looking down Main Street. If you'll notice, the west side, which is the right side, is where you want people to park now, and which is across the street from my house. And also to prove a point, for EMS needs to go down that road, it'd be the right side. You'd want to go down the road for a line of sight coming up to the stop sign at the end. Next picture's a little bit further down the street, just showing you what you're coming up to. And then the next one is actually the intersection of Main and Bowman. That's where you see the first fire hydrant of my street on the left-hand side, and of course, at the stop sign in the intersection. My block has no fire hydrants on it whatsoever, so there's no reason for safety, EMS getting to a fire hydrant for me to be blocking it on my side of the street. That happens south of Bowman on down to the next road. And then, the next one will be from Bowman facing back, showing you where I park. The house on the left where the X is, I can't park there because their children park there. So the little circle way down past the blue Ford is where I have to park from my house across the street. I go to work at 5:00 every morning. I'd be crossing the street in the dark, going down to my car where there's no telling who, because the homeless travel our street. So as far as safety, the only one that's unsafe now when you guys do this is me. Since that's which Public Works is basing this, where they put the signs is for safety of people. And I still have a problem with parking cars in front of a sidewalk, that people are walking up and down, children. You can't see them when you're driving through with the car. Somebody cuts in between, the pass between cars. It's very unsafe. So whatever standards you use to come up with these safety rules, oh, also, there's no bus stop on my block. That's the south block. So there's no interruptions on my block at all. The 107 East Kirk Street is where I first lived back in 2002, and lived there for 11 years. If you'll notice, my dog was the envy of the neighborhood because he had his own fire hydrant. That's it on the left-hand side. And you'll see the no parking's on the other side of the street. No problem there, no unsafe. That's the way it's been since 2002 that I know of. Then you get on down to the next street, the infamous Pearl Street. That picture is from Price facing down. As you start down from Price down Pearl, you have the fire hydrants on the right and no parking on that side, which is correct per standards. Then you get on down to Keene Street, and if you'll notice, and you can't read the sign because it's facing the other way, you're still headed west. The fire hydrants are still on the right-hand side, and then no parking's on the left, which is the opposite side. Now, we switched sides halfway down Pearl Street. Don't know why, but it's not a safety issue for that street, so therefore, it shouldn't be for mine. And then when you get down, the next one's also Keene Street, just to show you further, further down the road. Then the last one is coming back from the square. You have no parking on both sides when you get to a certain point. But this is facing east, and you'll notice the fire hydrant on the left, and you'll, all the parking facing back towards Keene Street. So, like I said, if we're gonna use standards for safety, they have to be across the board for the whole town. You guys have created a financial hardship against me for having to rent a storage unit because I can't park in my own driveway in front of my house. I don't know how else to explain it, other than in fact, I'm the only one that lives on this street that that's affecting. It's not my fault that they build five rows of driveway across from my yard where I can't park. You guys have to have some consideration in that. I don't, I feel absolutely insulted that my safety doesn't matter when this decision was made and the response that I read from the, from the Public Works. Don't know what else to say other than my block doesn't have to be that way. If some streets don't have to, then mine don't have to. And I don't want to say this, but it needs to be dealt with because there's equal rights. That's what we're all about here. That's what you guys represent. You represent me. And if I don't get my representation from here, I'll get it from somewhere else. And that doesn't mean I'm moving.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. And if there's a change, we'll get with you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, moving on. We've got the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September 3rd, 2024. If there are no additions or corrections, then entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Now we've got the minutes from the work session, same night, September 3rd, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. And now we have the minutes from the closed session of September 3rd, 2024. There's no additions or corrections there. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll have a roll call on that one. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Muted, Marcy.
Alright. Alderman Chaney and Davidson are excused.
Those minutes stand approved. First item on the agenda is a resolution, Council Bill 53.
Council Bill 53 is a resolution of the City Administrator to accept the results of the water rate and sewer rate studies from 1898 and Company completed in August of 2024.
Good evening. I'm Patty Hildebrand with the Public Works Department. Back in our September 16th meeting, we invited 1898 and Company to present the results of their water and sewer rate study for us. The results indicated a need for an increase in our water and sewer rates, and gave a lot of information on specifics on rates and what the increases would be each year. The primary drivers of this are inflation. Our costs have considered to go up quite a bit. Our inability to fund what needs to be done to our water and sewer system to maintain it so that it continues to serve the residents, our taxpayers, businesses. And we have some CIP, capital improvement projects, that are coming up very quickly, that are absolutely needed. Most importantly, the replacement of our seven-mile rock water transmission line, our primary source of water to move into our water treatment plant. And the other one is our new requirements from the federal government to address phosphorus and copper in our wastewater treatment. And that's another $4 million chunk of money that must be complete by 2027. So, we're definitely a little behind the eight ball. I know you've heard about the lead sewer line inventory that we've been working on, another federal mandate. So, nothing is inexpensive at this point, and to ensure that our water and sewer groups are able to adequately perform their jobs and maintain and really take care of the water and sewer system for residents, staff recommends the adoption of the water and sewer rate study is presented at the September 16th meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Patty or comments that I need a motion for the resolution?
I just have a comment. As we've looked at the numbers, you know, it appears that, you know, we're gonna stay fairly competitive on rates with the cities that we compare ourselves against. And so I would just suggest that from time to time, we continue to look at where we stand relative to other cities to make sure that we stay competitive.
Absolutely.
Entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Alright, resolution stands approved. Now I'm gonna open a public hearing on a code amendment for cruelty to animals, some changes to our laws regarding... changes to our laws regarding the animals in the community.
Christina Stanton, Director of Community Development. So we've talked about this a couple of different times and a few different work sessions, kind of gone back, and we're proposing these amendments to Section 210-070 to add clarity to the animal neglect and abuse by adding direct references to state statutes, which I believe was one of the things that was discussed. Additionally, staff's proposing some specific language regarding process and animal behaviors related to when an animal is left in an unintended vehicle without proper ventilation to try to address some of the concerns that were coming at staff. We had numerous phone calls and emails over the summer, especially about concern for animals that were left in hot vehicles. But after doing some more thorough review, you'll see there, the language in here talks about both heat and cold. We did a very thorough review across the state of different regulations that are similar. So again, this is addressing both heat and cold without a specific temperature and with an emphasis on the process. I will note, as I went back through the packets, somehow the one that's underneath the ordinance is the old ordinance and not the correct one, but the one that immediately follows the staff report is the actual ordinance that's being proposed. So staff has recommended approval of the proposed code changes, and we'll answer any questions.
So did we take out the 70-degree thing?
Yes. So in packet pages 60 and 61 and 62 are the language for the proposed ordinance. Like I said, Section A and B are direct references to the state statutes, and then D 1 through 6 are largely language from, I think, Springfield, except for I did not take the references to a specific temperature.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience that is of public participation? Any other questions from the board?
Christina.
Chaney, do you have a question?
I was just going to say thank, I was thanking her.
Okay. Very good. If no other questions, I'll close the public hearing. And this would be the first reading of the ordinance. We'll take this up again on the second reading on the 21st.
Council 050 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending Article 1, Chapter 210, Animal Regulation of the Harrisville Municipal Code and Establishing an Effective Date, first here, Council 050.
All right. Now we'll open a public hearing on the vacation of the railroad spur right-of-way.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing item for the vacation of the city's railroad spur right-of-way. And the public hearing was extended or continued for 30 days due to official opposition by Church and Dwight. So the public hearing is being held this evening. Staff does recommend the vacation of the right-of-way of the railroad spur, and I understand there are some representatives in the audience from Church and Dwight as well as from UFP Industries, Inc., and they may want to speak to the board.
Yep. And I believe they do. We, we try to hold these to three minutes, so quickly.
Three consecutive minutes?
Yeah. So yeah, you state your name and.
I don't want to go see the rolls again, so I'm not going to.
Okay. All right.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen, I'm Doug Stone. I'm an attorney at Lewis Rice Law Firm up in Kansas City. I'm not here tonight to object to the vacation. What I am here tonight to share with you is our view of the effect of the vacation. Think of it as if you were vacating Pearl Street. What happens when you vacate Pearl Street? You don't sell that to a third party who is, who is east of Lexington, right? You, you, you have to, but it's not even that you do something. When you vacate a right-of-way by operation of law automatically, no deeds, no conveyances, that land in that right-of-way goes to either the people on either side of it, where it was, the street's taken half and half, or in this case, I had some, I don't have three minutes to go through all my diaphragms and all that stuff. But what you would see is that, that this existing railroad spur right-of-way, a municipal right-of-way created by the city, dedicated to the public, has been used by Church and Dwight and by UFP all this time. When you vacate it, we're going to become the owner. We would rather see a situation where everybody is able to share in the continuing use of the spur. The spur is just as important to Church and Dwight as it is to UFP. I think that there are arrangements that could be made given more time. You know, I, I promised I wasn't going to chastise anybody, but my mom told me that if you really got something nasty to say, you ought to say it. So I just wanted to know, the first time we heard of any of this was when we got a notice in the mail. And so we're a little disappointed that there was a process going on negotiating with UFP over selling the spur that we both use without anybody coming to us and talking to us. So what I'm here to tell you is this. I, I think that there are ways to, to solve this problem. I, I think that, and I've had conversations with Mr. Fritzelin, who represents UFP. MMT, forget those guys. They don't have any rights. But, but UFP and we are both using that spur. We could create a scenario where we do a trust, we create a community improvement district, the CID owns the rail spur, both the individual property owners contribute maintenance costs to get it done. There are ways to do this. And so I know, you know, a purchase contract to sell this land for money, and, you know, money's good, we like money, right? But I think that there's other ways to solve this that could also bring money to the city. So if you vote on this tonight, we certainly respect that vote, but it will have an impact. And, and I'm just going to say that that will mean that we are the owner, and if we are the owner and somebody uses it against our ownership rights, you know, it's not good, right? So I would like to encourage you to give us another 30 days to sit down with Mr. Fritzlin with UFP, Church and Dwight's representatives. There is a solution here, and they're willing to talk about it.
Mr. Stone, your three minutes are up.
Time flies.
It's actually like 3:45, so.
I'm sorry. Well, thank you very much. I'd be glad to answer a question if anybody has.
Questions? Not, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Comment?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Tom Fritzelin. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Armstrong and Teasdale, also in Kansas City. I represent UFP. Respectfully, we disagree with the conclusions that Mr. Stone expressed as far as what happens when the, when the right-of-way is vacated. We don't believe it becomes automatically the ownership of Church and Dwight. We believe the city spent quite a lot of time and a lot of effort putting this process together, and we'd like to see it completed. And I'm not going to use the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you have any questions, that's all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing then. Are there any questions of Aldermen? Okay. This is again, the first reading of, of this ordinance. We'll take up the final reading in two weeks on the 21st.
Council 045 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, vacating a railroad right-of-way covering proposed Lot 5, the Enterprise Business Park, with railroad spur serving UFP Industries and establishing an effective date, first here, Council 045.
Two more weeks. Next, we've got a lot of public hearings tonight. Next is a public hearing for a special use permit for an existing tow lot located at 1505 Clearwater Drive. So that's Christine. Okay. Give us a little background.
Good evening again. Flip to the right one here, this tow lot for 515 Clearwater Drive, Jay's Tow Land, South Lanto, sorry, say it backwards. The applicant is seeking approval of a special use permit to continue to operate basically here. They've been in operation for quite a while without a special use, and staff was doing some research and found out that they didn't have a special use. The property is currently zoned light industrial in one district, and the use of an automobile, salvage, wrecking yard, tow lot, they're kind of all grouped together within the regulations. That's an allowed use in the zoning district with an approved special use permit. Section 405-525(c)(7) states that any sort of vehicle storage of one or more vehicles which don't belong to the property owner must be screened by a view-reducing wall screen, landscaping material from adjacent roads and residentially zoned or used property. Research of the site again indicated that it's been in existence for some time at this location since, by best estimates, looking at Google, 2009. And also looking at building records, I think we found some, some building permits for this as well, showing that it has never had a special use though. And the existing screen material, which was replaced in 2020 from an earlier, lower-quality screen material, meets the required screening for this use. The existing fence is eight feet tall. The city's 2040 Conference of Plan shows this area as employment light, which are areas that allow or support employment formats that are not appropriately integrated into a downtown or mixed-use setting such as office, parks, institutional campus, or even, you know, light manufacturing hubs within the community. This type of use does provide a needed service to the citizens of our community and of the county at large. And given that it's been existing for a number of years, staff is considering it to be consistent and appropriate with the conference plan and with that area. On September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen, and staff has recommended approval of the proposed special use permit for a tow lot at 5, sorry, 1505 Clearwater Drive with the following two conditions. One, the time limit associated with a special use permit shall be 10 years, at which time a new special use permit is required to continue operations, and two vehicles may remain on the lot for up to 90 days under a police hold. These were similar conditions as a special use had for a different property two years ago.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone in the audience want to comment on this particular item? Hearing none, then I'll close the, the public hearing. Council, you have any questions for Christine, follow-up? If, if none, this is also a first reading, and we'll take it up in two weeks.
Council 054 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville approving a special use permit for the use of a tow lot on property located at 1505 Clearwater Drive in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. First here, Council 054.
All right. Now I'll open a public hearing for a special use permit for another tow lot located at 402 Cedar Street. Very similar story, I think.
Very similar, yes. So in the effort of not repeating myself too much, you already mentioned this is 402. I will state this one is zoned general industrial in two districts. Same type of conditions apply. I do believe there's a slight difference in here somewhere that I'm going to go through in my notes real quick. A research on the site indicated this use has been in existence, again, for a number of years, since at least 2003. GT Tow was a tow lot I mentioned earlier that two years ago had come through for special use for this. And originally, All Pro Tow was the applicant, and during planning zoning, we talked about how this really should be the property owner. So we do have a revised application in here from the property owner, so it falls back to them to make sure the conditions are being met. And so that GT Tow is no longer there, and here's the different conditions that the M2 district, Article XVIIII, M2 general industrial district, Section 405-510B. The states, all storage of materials, products, or equipment shall be within a fully enclosed building, or in a partially enclosed building, or in an open yard having a solid fence not less than six feet height, giving total or partial screen from neighboring property and adjacent streets. In the case of junk or salvage operations, all storage and processing area shall be screened by a solid fence not less than 10 feet and not exceeding 15 feet in height. The materials and setbacks of it shall be approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's the one caveat that's slightly different. This, though, again, is still a tow lot, so it doesn't need the higher fence, but it's discussed in the second part, and it is meeting that, that minimum right now. So additionally, I already mentioned that section that talks about the screening from residentially zoned or used property. So staff had shared information about the previously approved special use permit with the original applicant, and they had requested additional extension of two years because I think the GT Tow had 18 months to do the increased screening. So they asked for two more years for three and a half years before having to install the sturdier, more opaque screening or a vinyl fence with the stone pillars. The existing screen material, if in good repair, and covering both entrance and exit gates, may meet the minimum requirements for general screening, as we just discussed. Additionally, it's worth noting that the other tow lots that we just talked about did originally have the, I'm sorry, did not originally have the sturdier, more opaque fence, that's a number of years before, and it changed hands before they were able to do that. The city's Conference of Plan shows this area as community mixed use, which not as much of a fit, but I'm still going out and saying that it is supported by the fact that it's been in this location for a number of years. And again, this is a use that benefits citizens and the county at large. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on September 19th and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval to the board. This site has a few more conditions as well as the two I mentioned before. So staff has recommended approval of the proposed special use permit at 402 Cedar Street with the following five conditions. The applicant shall make necessary repairs, replacement of any screen material as needed and as appropriate at the entrance, exit gates. The applicant shall upgrade their screening to vinyl fence with stone pillars within three and a half years. The time limit associated with special use permit shall be 10 years, at which time a special use permit is required to continue operation. I have to go through it again. Vehicles may remain on the lot for up to 90 days under a police hold. So those two are the same. And the height of the screening shall be increased to eight feet when the new fence is installed so that the contents cannot be seen from the street as matches what the other tow lot is doing. And I think there was discussion, the original comment on this one did not have a specific height. Planning zoning asked to have a specific number in there, and then looking again, like I said, trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison, and they should be the same.
Very good. Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this special use permit? No? Then I'll close that public hearing. Any questions for Christine up here? Okay. Again, this is a council bill which will take a first reading, and we'll take it up in two weeks.
Council 055 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville approving a special use permit for the use of a tow lot on property located at 402 Cedar Street in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. First here, Council 055.
All right. Next, we'll open a public hearing for the preliminary plat of Cedar Crossing lots 1 to 219 and tracks A, B, and C. You need a, need a drink of water or anybody?
No, but I will say somehow this got a little out of order. The rezoning PDP actually should be before the preliminary plats, but I can go forward this way if we want to go forward this way, since that's how it's on the agenda. I don't know how we got off.
Okay.
The applicant is seeking approval of the preliminary plat of Cedar Crossing lots 1 through 219 and tracks A and B. Some of the key issues for this is the proposed preliminary plat consists of 219 lots, 195 single-family lots, and 24 duplex lots, with sidewalks proposed on both sides of all streets, which is our requirement. The applicant is proposing to connect the north and south portions of development with a street to be placed over the dam, as was planned by city staff. On September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and voted 5 to 0 to recommend to the Board of Aldermen approval for this application. And staff has recommended approval of the requested preliminary plat with the following six conditions, and these are several of the same ones that you'll see in the rezoning PDP. The sidewalk shall have handicap access at all intersection accordance with Section 410-530B, and shall normally be separated from the edge of the street by a grassy strip 24 inches wide. Sidewalks shall comply with the ADA requirements in place at the time of construction, and all non-paved right-of-ways shall be considered, shall be either sodded or seeded. Builders on lots that are but the west side of Glen Eagle Drive from the previously platted Glen Eagle, lots 213 through 247, shall install sidewalks adjacent to Glen Eagle to assure connectivity. There was an issue with that development not finishing out for a time being, and that's been lost, and to try to make sure that that connectivity is not lost, that's why that condition's there. Trails shall be provided that connect to the sidewalks and connect the proposed and existing open space areas, including the height. open space areas, including the Hyde Park properties, which we'll get into discussion on the next piece. Sewer and water mains shall be installed with 10 feet separation and shall be located such that they are on different sides of the street, and this is a pretty normal requirement. Easements shall be provided as required by Section 410, 400 of the city's municipal code. They have some of them, all the ones, I think, on the front, but not all the ones that are otherwise required, so it's just getting us covered. We'll make sure it's there for the final. And a final plat shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved prior to the issuance of any development-related building or infrastructure permits.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience like to comment on Cedar Crossings? There you go. Name and address for the record.
Sheriff Matt Slisch, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Somme, Missouri. We have a presentation we can go through or not, we'll roll on. It's the same presentation we had the Planning Commission, so maybe just here to answer any questions if you prefer, so we can keep moving along, so.
I just had a few questions about your utility plans, other than city utilities. Can you explain the telephone?
Yeah, so obviously, city utilities for the sanitary and storm.
Right.
Water district for the, the water, and then everything else will be the secondary utilities with the gas systems, well, city electric, and then, you know, Comcast River will be for the Time Warner, whoever you guys have down here for telephone, internet, secondary providers on that. So we'll work on the secondary providers like the telephone and those guys as time kind of progresses along.
And will this all be underground?
Everything will be underground, I believe. I think you guys have from some of the electricity, I think, on the exteriors up in the air, I think it'll all go down below after that point, so everything we would be inputting in from secondary utilities would be, I think, as well.
Okay. Let's see, I thought I had something else here. Oh, so on the construction of the, of the homes, is that something the developer will control or will be open to independent builders?
I think the developer is looking to get a group of builders to come in and purchase lots and develop and not do individual builders, but I think at this time it's kind of open to that idea, but I think the initial look is to try to find someone who would come in and take a group of homes at a time so they could develop groups and get an area of models set up and get good progress moving along, multiple builder types.
Okay. That's all I had.
The mayor who's online has a question, but communications is not good, so Brad is going to ask the question.
The mayor would like to know if, has there been other developments in which this developer has developed?
Yes, the developer's here this evening, he can speak on his own, but he does have a development in Lee Somme that they've currently done, and he's been a contractor in the area for, for a number of years, working on a multitude of different developments on that side, but specifically has a residential development in Lee Somme that has just been completed.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Otherwise, I'm going to close this, the public hearing on Cedar Crossings, and we have a resolution to adopt this.
Councilor 056 has a resolution of the Harrisville, City of Harrisville approving a preliminary plat of Cedar Crossing Lots 1 through 219, tracks A, B, C, located on South Parkwood, South North of 267th Street in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri.
It's a resolution, all those, I'd make a, entertain a motion to approve this resolution approving the preliminary plat.
I made that motion.
Second. But maybe this should be a roll call. Daniel.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson and Chaney are excused.
All right. The resolution stands approved. It's Resolution 20, 24-26. All right, now we're going to open a public hearing on the rezoning of the approximately seven acres in preliminary development plan. Christina.
A little bit busy there.
You need more paper. I can get you some.
She says at the stand.
Yeah, well, I've got stuff hiding there from other discussion, just in case I needed it. So again, this is the rezoning preliminary development plan for Cedar Crossing. The applicant's seeking approval of that request. The rezoning is for approximately seven acres from RP 1 to RP 2 for the 24 duplex lots, and the preliminary development plan for the same, as well as 195 single-family residential lots on property located south of Parkwood South subdivision and north of 267th Street. The proposed preliminary development plan establishes development standards such as setbacks, lot area, quantity and quality of open spaces. Kind of diving into the analysis, the property is currently zoned, planned, single-family residential, RP 1 district, and the applicant is proposing, again, like I said, just about seven acres to be the RP 2 for those 24 duplex lots. The dimensional standards comparison on page seven of the, let's see, actually, that was page seven of the packet, P and Z, so let me flip here. And I said, dimensional standards, so that'd be page 170, 157, my goodness, of the board packet compares the dimensional standards for the standard R1 and R2 districts, and those are the previously approved Glen Eagle developments to the proposed Cedar Crossing developments. Setbacks proposed are very similar to those of the previously approved Glen Eagle developments, and the average lot sizes are also fairly comparable. The density comparison table shown on the next page on 158 compares the density of the previously approved Glen Eagle development to that proposed Cedar Crossing development, both individually and in combination with the platted portions of the Glen Eagle development. So you kind of can see all the different numbers and density across the board for that. Then I go into the rezoning criteria. Section 405, 630d1 lists several review criteria. Staff is focusing on certain ones that list A through Q that may be considered to the extent that they are pertinent to a particular application, but we're looking specifically for this one at A, B, C, E, M, and Q that staff considers to be kind of most appropriate for this application. The character of the neighborhood is, overall, character appears to be consistent with prior plans and the city's 2040 Conference of Plan. The existing and any proposed rezoning and uses of adjacent properties, and the extent to which the proposed use is compatible with adjacent zoning and uses. The location of proposed rezoning, being in the northeast corner of the development along with the larger lots for the duplex units, and the low-impact screening, it's part of the requirement, so, but between these lots, and the single-family residential lots, supports the overall compatibility of the proposed development and rezoning. The extent to which the proposed use facilitates the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. Development is providing the necessary public improvements, street sidewalks, water, sewer lines, open space, to provide for the proposed residents. Additionally, the school district is supportive of the additional housing and hopes that it will provide more affordable housing options and opportunities for staffs and family. The length of time, if any, of the properties remain vacant. The Glen Eagle development was approved in 2004, but it only developed, or were final-platted in 2005 in two sections, so it's, you know, been developing very slowly since that time, and the property proposed to be developed has that vacant. Really, if you want to go back in history further, as I have in the details, it's been vacant for longer, but I figure that's a good starting point, it's 20 years. The extent to which public facilities and services are available and adequate to meet the demand for facilities and services generated by the proposed use. The question of whether our public facilities and services are adequate to meet the demand generated by proposed use was brought to Public Works, and no concerns were raised. At this point, staff does not see any issues with the existing system meeting the needs of proposed development with the required public improvements that are part of the proposed development. And then the consistency of the proposed use with the permitted uses and uses subject to conditions within the districts. The proposed uses are consistent with the permitted uses within the district's proposed and the surrounding properties. Kind of going more into some of the analysis within the staff report, sidewalks and trails. The proposed development is meeting the requirement to have sidewalks on both sides of the streets. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it was discussed that the terrain in the basin area is too jagged to allow for sidewalk or trail placement in that area. We had talked about that quite a bit in the pre-app and applicants' meetings. However, there's still a need to install trails connecting the sidewalks and connecting the various open space areas, including the Hyde Park properties. No trails are shown in the proposed preliminary development plan, so that's something we're going to have to continue to work with the applicant, and there is a condition of approval related to that. Landscaping the proposed development indicates that street trees are to be installed throughout the development, and a low-impact screening is to be installed as required buffer between the single-family residential and the duplex lots. I think we talked before some with the applicant that the street trees are not required in a single-family development. In a multi-family, probably we'd push that more, in a commercial industrial, definitely, so we can have some give there. We definitely want to have the standards being met for the low-impact screening, though the developer needs to confirm that no trees will be planted within the site triangle of a street or a drive intersection within 10 feet of a fire hydrant, as some of our requirements. Additionally, the proposed low-impact buffer screen, as I mentioned, doesn't meet the requirement set forth in Section 405, 565f3c21. As no shrubs are indicated and the calculations have not been provided, I've got tables in there showing what those calculations break into, the different options, so again, it's something that we can, can continue to work through into the final development plan, but, and there is a condition of approval related to that. So kind of getting into another really important piece with this, the cash and lieu payment for parkland. Section 410, 630, under the city's subdivision regulations, provides criteria for dedication of park sites and cash and lieu payments, the calculations for which are included within packets. Trying to go real quick here to, I believe we're at the page 160 on that. And the city has had difficulty with the maintenance and upkeep of some of these parklands, so there's been a lot of discussion internally, and we've had some discussion from the city administrator to talk with staff. Both Parks and Rec Director and myself, Community Development Director, met at the discretion of the city administrator with developer to talk about exchanging the Hyde Park land rather than requiring the payment in cash and lieu, so they can help maintain that and help develop that parkland for the residents in that area, as well, of course, through our development. This has been brought to the board previously, and the board had agreed to the exchange, and it will be included in the development agreement, the draft of which is included in the packet. No traffic study was required for this development because proposed development is less dense than the previously approved Glen Eagle development, which did not have a traffic study required. There was some discussion on that early on, and there were discussions at that back when they did the Glen Eagle, and not required, and saying that at certain phasing that they might look at that again, but again, this one is less dense than that, so we're a little bit safer, a little bit not as worried. The 2040 Conference of Plan shows this area as suburban neighborhood. The Conference of Plan states this place type is intended to have residential areas around an interconnected curvalineer street network, and while si, single-family homes are the predominant housing type, these neighborhoods may also include accessory dwelling units, cottage courts, townhomes, and small-scale apartments. Identified key priorities for this place type are listed within staff report. I'm not going through all those, going through enough as it is. So on September 19th, the Planning and Zoning Commission had held the public hearing for this item and voted five to zero to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen for this application, and staff has recommended approval of proposed rezoning of approximately seven acres from RP 1 to RP 2, and the preliminary development plan for the 24 duplex lots and 195 single-family residential lots with the following conditions. Sidewalks shall have handicap access, same ones that we saw in the previous, as far as that goes, at all intersections accordance with Section 404, 10, 530(b), and shall normally be separated from the edge of the street by a grassy strip 24 inches wide. Sidewalks shall comply with ADA requirements in place at the time of construction, and all non-paved right-of-way shall be either sodded or seeded. Builders on lots that are but the west side of Glen Eagle Drive from the previously platted Glen Eagle, Lots 213 through 247, shall install sidewalk adjacent to Glen Eagle Drive to ensure that connectivity that we mentioned earlier. Trails shall be provided that connect the sidewalks and connect the proposed and existing open space areas, including the Hyde Park properties. No tree shall be planted within the site triangle of a street or drive intersection.
To utilize, and then we're going to make the connection.
I guess maybe another question has to do with, we, obviously, you looked at water pressure and water supply is not going to be a problem we don't anticipate.
Don't think so, what I was told.
Okay.
I was going to say, this is a, I'm trying to remember the water district now, not mix them up in my own head.
Nine.
Four, yeah. Somebody had said nine at one point, and I was like, no, that's not right.
Oh, this is water district four, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, they, they all look closely at the water. We looked at it, I think, as far as fire pressure and things like that, and we'll continue to kind of go through what we need to.
Containing 24 duplex lots and 195 single-family residential lots on property located south of Parkwood South and north of 267th Street in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. First hearing, Councilor 057.
Thank you. All right. That gets us through our agenda. We'll move on to Alderman reports. Go ahead.
All I've got, just going to welcome the new police chief. Great to have you with the city.
Alderman Fauch.
I would just echo that, and it's been a pleasure getting to meet the, the chief, and I hope he has a good experience here, and I know he's going to do a great job. Go.
Everyone seemed to be enjoying themselves. I wasn't aware of any, you know, discord or rowdiness or anything, but it was just nice to see him, it was nice to meet his wife, and it was nice to see the police presence. It was, and getting along. So hopefully, we'll get some more teams. I believe we've got five or six teams signed up already, so that, that's, we're headed in the right direction there. So I just wanted to say I was out and driving around. I feel is doing great things with that building out there. My lord, they've got a lot going on out there, but looks really nice and kept up good.
Back forward. Staff also.